Okay. All right, I'll call the board meeting.
It's still spinning.
Oh, it's spinning.
Was that recorded what I just did?
No, it's still spinning.
Yeah.
Oh.
There we go.
Good evening, we're gonna call this board meeting to order, thank you. We're gonna stand and do the pledge. Thank you, Todd.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on its fault with liberty and justice for all.
Bren. You probably pulled up here and say, why are all these cars here?
Welcome, David. Thank you. Um, well, again, this is our reorganization meeting, so obviously that's why Superintendent Heinz is trying to figure out what we're doing. Um, but before we go on to next, let's make sure our cell phones and those types of things are shut off or silenced. And then our first, our next order of business is the election of our chairperson for 2022. So.
I would like to nominate.
Lindsay.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
You can say it. Okay, I thought you were asking me again.
Nicole, thank you.
He's not that quiet, so that's no problem.
Hi, Bren.
One, they can't hear their nominations like these.
Are you running?
Laura, we are right now, we are working on electing our chairperson for 2022. We do have, Amy made a motion to have Lindsay Leach as our chairperson, and Nicole seconded. So if there's any other discussion or any other nominations?
Actually, two more times.
Two more times? Is there any other nominations? I suppose somebody can also make a motion to cease nominations. Uh, any other, anybody else?
We're nominating.
Okay, Karen.
No, I'll move that we cease nominations and testing that was valid for the agency.
Okay.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, it sounds right.
Sounds fantastic.
Yeah, it's gonna second.
Oh, and I'll have a second, so David, you're gonna second Ronnie's, okay? All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Oh.
Thank you.
Hey, there you go, Bren.
I know, you're so much better, Will, for that.
All right, um, thank you all. Uh, roll call, all board members are present. Um, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Um, I think we are, we are, we're keeping, that's what I talked to, I just wanted to make sure it's a real, no changes.
Okay, I do have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I moved.
Motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, six point one public comments. Uh, six point two record recognition. I'm not sure we could speak to it, but we had a bunch of seven fitters down, was it seven fitters that did, um?
The government, yeah, and so.
Was it?
No, I think it was, there was a bunch of them in place. Um, I don't know about the high school, I just know middle school, because Dana Moffett was gonna, she, I asked her if she could touch base with me after they got back, she tried, I was in a closed door session with somebody, so she did not. I got an email from her saying, hey, Fred, stuff, I see you, but you were busy. So I have not heard how it went. I didn't get any phone calls, and it didn't go well, so that's good. Um, but, and I know that Katie took high school kids, too, they all went together, uh, for class, and Katie drove a little bus, so.
There we go.
Yeah, so there was another experience right there, but, uh, anyway, uh, I haven't heard anything, so I guess I'll have to report this.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanted to mention it, because I just think that's fantastic, that students have that opportunity to go to something like that, so kudos. Any other things going on? Let's move on to approval of our December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, we have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm skipping reports. I'm sorry, look at that, terrible chair today, terrible, I'm freezing. Okay, seven point one board committee reports. Um, David, you wanna give us a report on negotiations?
Sure. So, uh, we met with the, with the youth teacher union, and we got to a tentative agreement. Um, the basics of it are that, um, there's a whole bunch of language changes, and we've talked about those previously. Um, but with regard to the dollars, so one of the things that we wanted to do was try to increase the amount that teachers receive for healthcare insurance, and at the same time, look presently right now, you're given as a teacher, six thousand two hundred dollars. And then, um, if you don't take the insurance, you're given the same amount, you put that into, um, 403B or into, uh, the HSA.
Supplemental life insurance.
Yeah, kind of whatever you talk, vision, yeah. And so what we wanted to do is to increase the incentive for teachers to pay health insurance, so we raised for the second year of the contract, the amount given for health insurance up to eight thousand two hundred and fifty, I think, I don't know, that's the maximum, but we're, it comes in less than that, which we hope. Uh, but we want to increase that amount so that we can get more people on health insurance, be better for those that aren't in those terms overall. Um, as far as the, uh, the, we'll call it chart, the test in lanes, the matrix, I don't know what I call it, uh, one of the things the teachers wanted to do was to move those folks, um, over an extra lane that, um, were a part of the freeze back in two thousand, it was eighteen, or perhaps in two thousand sixteen. And so those folks are gonna move over an extra step, so you're gonna move two steps. Everybody will move over a step, and then, and I get it, it's first year, the second year, first year is a half a percent?
Yep.
First year is a half a percent, uh, to the matrix, and second year, there's nothing, because they're getting the two step. So, um.
But there is dollars added to the maximum.
Yeah, that's right, and dollars are being added to the bottom rung, so once you've hit your, uh, your final step, those folks, um, there's no, no steps for them to go, and, um, unless they're in education, there's, you know, no lane changes. So we've added money to those, to those at the bottom. And trying to think of other things that we've, we've done. Um, the 403B, we had talked about doing a tiered system with that, the matching contributions to 403B, and we just decided to keep it the same, at nine hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, um, matching.
Actually, it's a thousand dollars.
Oh, a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars to second year. I think, that's right. Tell us about it again, I saw that, that's right.
And then we are gathering our need for life insurance, basically, and long-term disability.
Yeah.
That's just gonna be an expense to the district pays, they don't have to take it out of that.
So overall, the total packages is, uh, nine hundred and, I think, nine hundred and seventy-one, but, you know, that could change, of course, with more people getting on health insurance, because there's the difference between that, between those that are not. Um, so it could be a little higher than that, but that's already in the, on the, on the normal package, so. Did you guys all get it last, I think it was Friday? We sent it out, so you can see it.
Questions?
Cause clarification, like on step one, then they get this half a percent the first year, or everybody on the step gets a half a percent, gets that?
Yeah, the whole matrix got a half a percent added, yeah.
The second year too, or just the first year?
Nope, just the first year, and then the second year, they're getting the double step, or double, double step, I guess, the two, the two step, and then, uh, and then that added money.
You have questions on that?
All right, any other board committees that have met us recently?
Oh, yeah, you guys have, we just had policy today, um, Shannon's gonna kind of cover the avid core thing in here, but then we also discussed, um, some questions with, a couple of our policies as far as whether they should change, or work on enforcement, and we've just determined that they are good solid policies, and we'll just work on trying to implement them more consistently throughout our district. Are you accurate?
Yeah.
Can you, which ones did you guys have concerns about this?
Specifically, policy five oh four, which is the dress code.
Yes, fair.
And so no word changes, the only word change was what was, um, in our first reading, which was head, headgear.
Instead of just hats, it had all that.
Yeah, yeah, more inclusive, so, um, that was the only word changing from the first reading, but no word changes since then, just.
Correct, okay.
Better implementation.
Okay.
Just one thing, you know, just that, shout out to the teachers, I think we had really, it was really positive, uh, negotiations, and, uh, just wanted to thank, thanks to them for helping make it so positive.
That's so good. All right, so any other committee reports? I think we'll just talk about it briefly, we have, just, we'll declare right now, um, that we're going down to the cities for MSBD training this Thursday and Friday, and we have classes starting, I was sort of looking at the book, and I'm super excited about, um, some of the classes that they're offering this time, so it'll be nice to be back in person and getting to hear some of the, uh, roundtable discussions, I have started marking my book up, so. I don't know if I'm gonna walk around this year, though, and, and, uh, pick up every little, uh, trinket, my daughter is over that whole phase, but she thought it was cool, so. Um, so anyway, we'll be gone for a couple days here, so, uh, let's move on to seven point two, superintendent report.
Yeah, thank you, Lindsay. Uh, construction update, uh, just things are moving along, which is great. Uh, did meet last Thursday at ten about our changes, um, with all the things I brought up here, what, a month ago, or whatever, with the gym, with this space here becoming middle school choir and band, and art room down there, whatnot, so went through all that with the numbers, because the numbers they gave us were originally, obviously, preliminary. Um, we knew that, we discussed, kind of worked through them a little bit more, made sure that we, that Comstock and JOG really understood exactly, so we went through in detail on Thursday about what that looks like. Um, had a lot of discussion about the costs and whatnot, and we'll just have to see a little bit more. Uh, right now, the way the numbers were, uh, they looked okay, I asked a fair amount of questions, and then the one thing that's vital, or very important to hear, is that I talked to Kip, Kip being our lawyer that working on hopefully bringing these guys to mediation, um, was that you can agree on the designing and whatever, but you're not gonna agree on fees. I said absolutely, because the fees were forty thousand for this, and eighteen, you know, whatever their fees are, they have their formulas, and so they were told that at that meeting. We'd like to continue on, yep, what you did there works, and let's go, um, but we're not interested in fees that you have tied to all of this. Um, Lee said he was gonna have to talk to Dan and see if they could still move forward, I haven't heard back, I'm assuming we're moving forward, I haven't heard any, any other way. So that's positive. Um, Kip has talked to both companies, uh, they're both working with their lawyers to get prepared for a mediation meeting. So this will go to mediation, the way it's sounding. Uh, Kip felt that within the month, uh, he's gonna hear from both companies, and hopefully we can get that app. And then it's just gonna be to come together now, I think I've stated this before, mediation is voluntary, so they can volunteer to go, it sounds like both companies are interested in doing it, they've been visiting with their lawyers, bringing things together. Once that is complete, and, and the mediator says, hey, JOG, you're this percentage, or this dollar amount, and Comstock, you're this much, and then the schools, the rest, even after his ruling or decision, that is not, um, binding, they don't have to pay it, they could disagree, they could say, no, hey, thanks mediator, we, we got what you did, but we don't agree. At that point, we're gonna have to make a decision, let's say they don't agree, uh, on the number, or on the percentage, or whatever it comes out to be from the mediator, then we're gonna have to make a decision potentially, okay, well, is there litigation instead of mediation, so now we're gonna fill that role, that'll be a discussion we'll have to have at that point, I'm hoping that we can come together and get something resolved without having to do that, because if we go into that, that could change what's happening, I guess, around us. So, I just wanna make sure you all heard that and know that, that's where we're excited about the opportunity here to sit down, hopefully with them, and, uh, because the safe people and come up with something. Um, but, uh, I should also say, I would like to, as soon as we're done with our meeting today, show you where, um, we rethought through the shop, because of all the expense, uh, over Christmas break, I, I visited with a few people about where I wanted to put it, and all the infrastructure that it will take to get, to put it there, water, sewer, on and on and on, power, and I started thinking, yikes. So over Christmas break, John Jacobs and I were going, where else could we put this thing, so it's connected to this building? And so down by the kindergarten rooms, current kindergarten rooms, by Glennon, as you come out, uh, uh, we know how big we can get it, and then a classroom right across the hall can be the shop classroom, we visited with, with, uh, the whole admin, brought them over, had Comstock look it over, and so, um, they think, all the infrastructure's there, we don't need a bathroom put in there, we have the sprinkler system, it's already in the hallway, um, it's, anyway, so we're pretty optimistic that that's gonna work well, Comstock is working right now, uh, to try to put something together for us, so we can get it approved, I met with the state guy last Thursday about it, and its location, and he was gonna look and something, but he was talking to Travis, too, that he thought, yep, this can happen here, this could be a good spot, and, so, anyway, I, I would like to show you at some point, and I know we have a basketball game tonight, too, so whatever, I just would hope to show you what I'm talking about, so you can kind of get a visual on it, so. Anything, like, do questions that, yeah, what do you have about construction?
I was just thinking about the budget for construction, do we have a sense of that?
Yep, so I met with Marcus today, I meet with Marcus in the manner tomorrow, and that's part of the report that I am gonna visit with the budget committee on, we're gonna hopefully do Friday morning, because Marcus works all day Thursday, too, I've asked him to put quite a bit of stuff together for me in my meeting today, um, and one of them is construction. Um, as far as the contingency dollars, they're still there, yeah, and I have those numbers, but I think some of those numbers should be given back to us, and I guess that's why we're open to go to mediation. But, yep, those numbers I will have for you Friday morning at the budget committee, whatever we have, we're sending them all on a copy, I don't, anyway, okay? Any other questions about that? There's a lot going on with the construction, just please, just ask me anytime, it's, uh, I, I, I told Brooke, uh, last week, I said, maybe it's time for the superintendents, I used to do this every month in Lancaster, um, maybe it's time to give a six-month update. Uh, I'll have Tracy recording me, and I'll just go through some things, especially because of the construction, I'm sure, you know, you guys probably get beat up, the teachers get asked a hundred times, so I get, it's like, maybe I should just clear this all up, and have some of that conversation, hey, six-month update, here's what's happened, really excited, here's, you know, just for me, I've been here six months, and maybe, um, I don't know, I did it every month up there, just talked about what was going on, what was good, what was, you know, um, it's just a lot going on, I really love it, so, and I don't wanna ramble any more than that, yeah, so.
I think that would be well received, I think that would be, you know, something.
Yeah, sometimes it's good to put the face, and then actually hear, okay, well, yeah, he is alive, and he does do something, at least I'll say that I do, yeah. Um, but, um, so, yeah, with that, we, we can run around maybe later, and just take a walk through. Uh, COVID updates, one of the things we did talk about, it's not necessarily a policy, but we talked about our resolution here, too, during our policy meeting, and that is, the CDC has come up with some guidelines, um, the Supreme Court's currently having a hearing, and so what comes from all that, I guess we'd like to let them make that decision, hopefully they make it, it sounds like it's supposed to be soon, so hopefully this week, then I think it's time for us to look at a resolution, and are there some things we could do with quarantining? Uh, we figure there's at least, uh, one thing with parents or in-house, that we could cut that, maybe by ten days, I think it was, or something. Um, so, it's something we wanna talk about, but we don't have to make that change yet, because.
Yeah.
Who knows what's gonna come down the pike, and so we thought we'd wait for that, so. Um, our COVID update, we do have a little bit of an outbreak right now, uh, our numbers are up a little bit today, so, um, when I say up, we're probably in the low teens, um, but the quarantine thing is a little different, too, so, I, anyway, we'll see, we're gonna keep a real close eye on it, I talked to both Megan and Kayla today quite a bit, because, uh, we have a little bit of a higher number today.
And just visiting pod, like it was last.
A little bit in the ladies and gentlemen behind me, there's a fifth, there's like, how many fifth grade teachers behind me, like, two, I think, and it's kind of helping with them, it's nice to hear that they're here, or see that they're here, I'm not gonna say anyone who's there, so that is, we do have a little bit of a, England and sixth grade, um, is our highest number.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll say that, because that's true, and then we'll, yeah. Um, not to the number that we had before in sixth grade, but it's mine.
Yeah, our letter's still getting sent out by the nurses.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Our letter's still going out.
Yeah, they should be, yeah.
Contacts in the classroom, yeah.
Yeah, they should be.
I got, I got, David probably got two.
Okay, so good, okay, yeah, great, I'm glad you asked, all right, and, oh, what about that, it sounds like they are, so, yeah. So if you did get one, good, it was a sign.
I'll send my email.
Oh. Don't hold your breath, okay.
And I think it's just a good reminder that, if, you know, if anybody's watching us, like, if your kids are sick, keep them home. Please, we, I mean, I know the teachers will help you, administration will help you, you know, get caught up, this is not, you know, they're not gonna leave at you and say, well, you had a fever, you should have been in school, no, keep your kids home.
For sure.
We even had to have a town hall meeting, I worked today, for my staff, stay home.
Yeah.
You know.
It is difficult, it just has to be done, yeah.
But if you're sick, you're sick, I mean, it's just a different beast for dealing with than rules have changed, you know, like, I've talked to someone, they said, well, what I felt when I had COVID, or this time, that I felt like I just had, I was a little rundown, like, I wouldn't really take two, I'd be broken, go to work.
Yeah.
You know, so, I, it's just, it's, but keep your kids at home.
Yeah, if they're sick, they're sick, if they have a fever, for sure, right, that's an easy one.
Fever is, yeah, I think, I think.
And it's also easy to do.
Yeah.
Anyway, easiest. Uh, next thing on their strategic plan, uh, we have received sixty-four responses to the second form, which is great, so we had seventy-nine the first round, we had sixty-four the second. Um, I met with my admin team today to talk about next Monday, it's workshop day, part of that day is for them to meet with site teams, their site teams to kind of show, here's what we got, okay, we gotta start looking through it a little bit, hey, site teams, are we missing anything, admin's gonna look at, are we missing anything, before we take it to the entire staff to go, what are our top three, four, whatever. Um, so we got a lot of responses, there's a lot of good information, I was reading through today, and that's good, so it's just in that collection mode still, and I will start to clean through that, and put it together, so site teams will look at it a week from today, and then we have to determine how much time we need, so again, we're looking, might Aprilish for sure, March, April, I want our whole staff to, entire school district staff to go down those things. Um, it must be a conference, I just put it on there, so same thing for me, I'm excited to go, um, just for a lot of reasons, I think it'll give us time to talk about school, yep, and that's important, I think it'll also get, uh, time for us to get to know each other a little bit, hey, what I'm about, what you guys are about, it's just, it's important, because when you start making some significant decisions, it's kind of nice to know where they come from, or if they're not agreeing with you, you kind of have an idea why they're not agreeing with you, so I think it's, it's important, uh, and so, yeah, in my past experiences going with my boards, um, it's been very productive in that fashion, so, yeah, very excited about it, and there are a lot of good things to go to, refreshers, if nothing else, so. Second semester starts today, so, just thought, hey, you didn't know, your kids are getting a fresh start today. Um, food service director, so, yeah, I told Chelsea on Friday, do this final replacement, please, but, but here we are, um, talking with Lake's Country, um, a couple times last week, met with them again on Friday, um, they feel they're less than an interim for us. Just talking with Chelsea, and what we need, and what our head cooks are gonna do, and so I'm meeting with the head cooks tomorrow afternoon at one thirty, so Tammy and Renee. Um, anyway, just visiting with Melissa Lake's Country, yep, they can help us, they can bridge a gap, they can do some things, but they really don't feel like they're any kind of a long-term, even the rest of the year, they're hoping that we post it, because they just don't have the people, and I get it, so they're kind of in their own world, scrap for, you know, who can do what, who can't. So, um, talked to Bren, we met them Friday after that meeting, because I get into a little bit of panic mode, Bren, they just hired somebody a year ago in Morhath, uh, we talked to their HR person today, got all kinds of information from them, and, uh, we're gonna have to post it. Uh, it's a position we already have, so you guys are gonna have to do a resolution or anything, but I just wanna let you know, based on, yeah, it's just, I'm beginning to post, and, and so you'll see that, I guess we'd like to post it tomorrow, I wanted to tell you guys first, or ask you today if you had any concerns about that, but it's, I, I'm not gonna be your food service director, if, if you want our kids to eat something normal, other than Cheetos, I'm just kidding, uh.
Cheetos and Cheerios.
Cheetos and Cheerios, Cheerios for breakfast, we're gonna chase, but, I just, uh, I could get the milk out there, but, I'm not your guy, um, so anyway, just, it's just what it is, so, again, thank Chelsea for, I, because I didn't know, I asked her, hey, how long you been here, and she said, eight years, and so it just, um, as I finished up last week with her, and had more meetings, obviously, than I had before, uh, I just really found out how professional she is, uh, how organized she is, she's got all of February's, uh, menu done, and she was, and she said, call me anytime if you need it, she just was, it was good for me to listen, you know, I got to know her a little bit more, and I just haven't had a chance to visit with her much, so, I, I know I envy her, um, she's just very organized and very professional, so, yeah, we're gonna miss her, and hopefully we can find somebody, look, you slipped. Um, avid core update, so this was a change, uh, so Avid has been a part of our school district, I think, and you guys could tell me, for a little while, um, we worked four years, yeah, so we worked through this company that supplies the curriculum, just, you know, all this, well, it was coming due in the middle of the year, which, okay, so I just asked for an extension, let's just do it the rest of the year, and we'll reevaluate whether we're gonna do it or not, no, has to be done now. And if you don't do it now, you can't use the name, you can't, that's trademarked, and you can't use this, it's a registered, duh, 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 come on. So, hey, we're just asking for the rest of the year, prorated, whatever, no, so I said, hey, guys, we're not gonna do Avid the rest of the year, we'll do it something else, because we can't use their materials, we can't do this, that, I'm not gonna spend twenty-two thousand dollars a year on their curriculum, it's not gonna do it. And, uh, and if they're gonna play that kind of conversation with this, it's serious, I asked for a prorated, and they just were not interested, well, okay, fine, have a nice day. Um, so, we've had this going on for a while, we've had at least one teacher that's done it for a while, and so I guess my que, my question here was, can, you have enough information, because you taught these skills, they're important skills, they are, you know, the study skills, the note-taking, or whatever, organization, and all that stuff's very important for kids, but we make a significant, well, I'll, I'll just say it like this, we put as much money into Avid, maybe a little bit more, than we do in our math, and our language arts, because we have three teachers that teach it, plus twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars a year in curriculum. That's a major investment. Um, is it good? Sure, there's some very good components to it, and that's why we had to rename it, we're gonna call it four, and Joe's not here now, too, but you guys were such good listeners when he was here during the policy committee meeting, you remember that it stood for?
Cooperation, coordination, responsibility, engagement.
Oh, nice, you heard.
Maybe that'd be done later.
Wow.
I think that would remember.
It did, yeah.
Hey, nobody knows the difference, Brittany, it was perfect.
Anyway.
So that's what it is, yeah, and so they're gonna teach it the rest of the year under that name, okay, so at second semester, we had to let parents know, some of you have probably got an email from, from the school about that change, um, again, the same principles are gonna be there, it's just not gonna be under the Avid name, so Avid has resources for our teachers, and that's the piece that we're gonna move out on, they get monthly, kind of a video thing, and then you talk about it, those are the types of things that our teachers are gonna miss out on, but again, uh, I think, uh, as professionals, they will do a great job, but that's out this year, and we gotta talk about what's it look like next year, and be, so, anyway, that's the update there, and, and if there's any questions, that's kind of lengthy, I think.
Oh, no, that is, just fine. Any questions? Great, well, let's get into the midst of our meeting here, approval of the December thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting, we have a motion.
Hmm.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Yep.
Second by Laura, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Nine, um, nine point O, this is our declaration of associations for possible conflict interests, this is something for the general public that's watching this, we have to do this every year, um, if anybody on the board has relationships, uh, with anybody that we could possibly hire or do work with, we're just gonna go around the table, for any, wanna go first?
Um, I guess my husband's grandmother is owner of a box. Um, I guess my husband's grandmother is on our department. Okay. I work with Jeffrey in the school research department.
Okay, Ronnie?
I don't think I have any more.
Yeah, I'm, none of them, Laura.
No, never.
Laura.
Alright, well, that was easy. Alright, ten point one, this is the, um, election of our vice chair, do we have a motion? To make a nomination? Make a motion to nominate, Devin? Do we have a motion? Okay. Second by Nicole. Uh, anybody, uh, other, another nomination? Vice chair? Again, another nomination? You're waiting for Ronnie to turn in.
One more time to make him flip.
Anybody else want to be the vice chair?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, hearing no other nominations, um, who seconded? Who made a motion? Amy made the motion.
I seconded.
So all those in favor, uh, well, here we go. So Amy moved, Nicole seconded motion to cast unanimous ballot for David as vice chair, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Too much wording, I don't usually read this, I need to do it better for reading. Alright, this is a motion, um, for nominations for clerk, uh, do we have a nomination?
I nominate Amy.
David nominates Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, just got Ronnie over here. Is any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations? Right, hearing no other nominations. David moved, Ronnie seconded, motion to cast unanimous ballot for Amy as clerk, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, this is ten point three, this is a motion, uh, to nominate our treasurer, do we have a nomination?
Nominate Laura.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Did I miss the, the lighter? I don't know why, so, is there any other nominations?
I didn't ask her ahead of time.
Oh, you didn't ask her ahead of time, or though?
Didn't let it.
Friend, are you, huh? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any nominations? Alright, hearing no other nominations, Nicole moved, David seconded, to cast unanimous ballot for Laura's treasurer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nicole's, motion carries. I'll think of this last time. Great, so we have our consent agenda, um, Laura, claims and accounts, please.
Seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars, ninety-five cents.
You have to say that one more time for my old ears.
Yeah, seventy-eight thousand, four oh one, ninety-five. I skimmed it like five ahead without this. Who is this, the lowest?
I, I looked at it per, pergrisly, Ronnie, did you go through a, uh, with a fine tooth comb, or you'd see, anything we missed?
No, just one new thing on there, and I pursued, and I was that new lawyer.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and let's just like it to stay this way.
No.
What's missing, I don't know, but let's keep it up.
More of the same.
Alright, also included in your packet is the treasurer's monthly budget report, um, we're gonna approve the resignation statement, Tony Pollak, here professional effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Approve the resignation of Barrett Belling, here professional effective January third, twenty-two. Approve the resignation of Chelsea Newsom, food service director effective January seventh, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Hello.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Not for me.
Second by Brittany. Any further discussions or questions? Alright, hearing no questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Alright, twelve point one, um, this is to set our twenty twenty-two board compensation. Um, previously, we have been paid per meeting, and we have had some discussion as a board, um, to go to a fee, just a monthly stipend. The reasoning behind this is it would be number one easier for our, um, business manager. Be less cumbersome for us to remember every time we're in a meeting. Um, and three to take away, basically, set our compensation, so mileage would be included in that, so no one has to submit anything. Um, I'm gonna open the floor for discussion on this, I know Brooke had sent out a compensation thing, I'm, see if you have it, I totally can't find mine, so.
See.
Uh, she had it on one of our board packets, but let's just have a good, good discussion, we pass it to Ronnie.
This is the exception of.
Yeah.
How is mileage?
Just, just so no, I just, set the compensation to a level where everybody's comfortable that you don't have to submit mileage unless you're driving your vehicle down to the cities or something. Just, just one flat kind of fee a month. I don't think everybody here is playing too much.
Not, not everybody, no, no.
No.
But I guess that's, I think the concept is, okay, so what is your tip, how many meetings you have a month? How many miles is it typically, can we kind of get a number that some people will, you know, depending on how many committee meetings, yeah, but.
Yeah.
So some of you will gain a little, some might lose a little, but hopefully by the end of the year, that flat rate is just a number, can cover you for your travel. Now, with that exception of, hey, I got a meeting in Minneapolis for the schools, different, turn in some mileage, right? That's different.
Yeah.
But just our monthly meetings, our monthly business? I don't know, it was a suggestion, and you guys, uh, kind of, it's cleaner, but it also has to be fair, I guess.
Always turn in the mileage because of the fact that I don't have to pay income tax on that, I'd rather get mileage back. But, you know, so it's not a very welcome level, but I figure I would gain on a monthly thing anyway, even with the mileage, because I don't have many committees. So, you know, I would make up on that, those that have a lot of committee meetings, or ones that's gonna be losers on an average.
They are, no question, yeah, no question.
How far?
What?
You, how far you live from school.
For sure. And that's what we're saying, is there a number that kind of?
Right. I, I don't have a, a number, but I am all for streamlining the process. Like, when I looked at this, you know, I think that there's a, a large variety of things, but I, I know that there's sometimes that, um, the, our sheets that we have, these ones, you know, I'm sure they get cumbersome and confusing, and then they gotta go back and recheck them, and I don't know, I think they're more trouble than they're worth, I guess. I don't think any of us got into this position. I honestly didn't know what to say until after I looked at it, so. Bonus, I guess. Yeah. Didn't ask enough questions on the front. Um, so, please, it doesn't matter what happens. More than once. I, she's red. Well, and when we, when I can only speak for myself, but when we got on the school board, it was, you know, it was basically because some people do have a lot of committees. I mean, I'm gonna raise my hand, I, I, this last year had a lot of committee meetings. But I am so over this cumbersome sheet, I had, half the time, I'm like, where was I, whatever, I, I just, I didn't do this for the money, but I, I think there should be a little bit of compensation to, um, just kind of, be an incentive for people to maybe, maybe it would be an incentive for people someday to run for the school board, knowing that, you know, you get a little bit of compensation. That's just my opinion.
You could emphasize a little bit for your time?
Yeah. Yeah.
Would you consider work sessions as part of the salary too, or would that be something addition, you think, or what?
That's a great discussion, what do people think?
I think so. I mean, you know, we can say so, in comparison to that, I mean, I don't know what, I mean, do we have W two, I don't know, honestly, what it is, it's somewhere around two, three thousand dollars. Something like that.
And I'll be full disclosure for the public, I had some meetings last year, I'd be around six thousand.
Yeah, it could be closer to that.
Just to be honest.
And it includes the chairman, which is additional.
Yeah, which is a additional, additional.
Well, and we have the superintendent search and all that, I mean, that added quite a bit to all what we were doing. Right, yeah, there's just.
Yeah, so just, just for the public that's watching this, like, Morehead pays their board members nine hundred dollars, we are not Morehead. Any, any sense of the imagination? No.
Yeah, but you do the t-shirt to go through.
Yeah. Um, you know, I, I guess, before, when, like, when we started on the board, um, you know, there was just feeling by some people that while some people don't have as many committee meetings, I mean, I, as your chair, like, I wanna hold you guys all to the standard, if you have a committee, I want you to, either if you can attend, find out who ran the meeting, get the meeting minutes, so, I mean, you're doing your part, and that might be outside of, outside of time that's set aside for specific board meetings, that you might have to do some research. But I think we're all here, and we all wanna do a good job for our community and know what's going on, and we, we do reach out to people, so, I'm completely comfortable.
What do you think, is a reasonable number?
Yeah, what's the process for?
Um, so, and let's just start, let's just start, like, if I went around the room, like, what, what is the number, what do you think? Let's just get the conversation.
I have no idea.
I, I was, I was in my mind around, like, three to three fifty a month, that's what I kind of had in my mind.
That's about where I was. I mean, you know, I have no, I have actually no idea what the meetings are, and I missed a couple months reporting, so.
Hence why we need to get rid of these.
So, but I, I think that's probably about right. Um, you know, I think back, I know we had a busy year this year, so it's a lot of it.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's reasonable.
I guess in my mind also it was about three hundred, and actually, taking that into consideration how busy this last year was, we'll probably stay in the school district for a month. Um, um, I would still like to encourage the board chair to give an extra second Monday.
Yeah, I agree, but.
Home calls come to you more frequently, um, by way of your family, whether that be home calls or whatever it is, um, you sometimes hear about things that we don't, and there's a reason to that, because something comes to fruition, we all need to know. Um, so I'd like to encourage to keep that.
Okay, you back on what Amy said, because, um, Lindsay knows this often, if there's a decision that I'm thinking of making or not making or whatever, I usually try to reach out to her first, uh, and say, hey, Lindsay, what do you think, here's what I'm thinking. Sometimes we just do it then, and cause she goes, oh, yeah, or, oh, yeah, I think we should send that out. So that takes her time too, because I reach out to her fairly frequently, I guess, too, so, I agree.
And if we don't.
Yeah, we got nominated for it.
We'll never have another nomination for chair if we don't.
No. Ronnie, what are your thoughts? You've been doing this for twenty-seven years.
Well, I'm on the low end usually, because I haven't had that many committee meetings.
Cause I'm such a nice friend.
Yes, you are. Well, I'm probably down around two thousand a year, I guess, I was kind of trying to think, an average of maybe more like three thousand a year, which is two fifty, but I'm okay with the others, but I would think you'd need some of these, I'm just looking here now, that's PCLA's, you know, they get two fifty a month, but then chairs a hundred, clerk treasurer fifty dollars, or whatever, there's no provision, so. And I'm still not sure though that if something unforeseen comes up, like maybe litigation has to happen or something like that, or those should be included in your regular salary, if that should be an additional stipend, if somebody gets stuck having to do that, I don't know, it's just a thought.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, if we set it at the three hundred and three fifty, that would give us enough cushion, so if there's litigation or, um, you know, superintendent search this last time, you know, took a lot of time, so, you know, something that's bigger that takes more time. I think that, you know, some years will, like this year would be, uh, probably a loss, but, like you said, nobody's really gonna put money, except for me, of course. And, uh, I think that's reasonable. I also think the clerk, uh, should receive extra as well, because, uh, we wanna have clerks.
Yeah, and good, no taking.
And kind of taking, and that's a, that's a really thankful stuff, so.
Nicole, and Brittany, any thoughts? Oh, you, you sure yours, Brittany, any thoughts?
I guess I was on like the lower end, like Ronnie, like the two fifty, but I think the three is close to that. I don't know, you could do, unless it's anything in over the four hours like we have down here, then do an additional, like if we do a work session or like a superintendent search, we did like all the, that type of thing. I think that would be fair if we did the two fifty, you know, because it's more varied.
Good thing is, you think about this number, whatever number it is you guys come to an agreement on, is that it's a one-year deal. You know, it's not like you're tying this to a three-year, five-year deal, it's, you know, we're gonna try it out for a year, this is a number, and next year you go, wow, wow, that was really good, or that was, yeah, we were really short, we should rethink that. So I'm just saying, I mean, sometimes you gotta stop and go, okay, this is just for a year, and yeah, I don't know, just other things, well.
You still have to have those additional, like even going down the MSBA now, and all day things, if they start to be a daily, like stipends for all day events, so.
I mean, you could, you, I guess I was thinking we wouldn't do that, and the reason would be.
I think if you go to the higher end, you, you balance it all out, I, I guess, and I, I think then we're back to these papers, if we, if we keep adding all these meetings, we're not getting rid of the paper, and which, I, I mean, I don't care, I'm pretty good about filling out, but the problem I think is on our business manager, they already have a lot of things going on, and we're just making it a cumbersome process that really doesn't have to be here a complicated, we can simplify certain things. Yeah.
Can you lose a paper, I can't.
Yeah, it could be set up and, you know.
Just done for the year.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like, like David's saying, like, I don't think we need to make it extra complicated, if we just set a number, maybe we decide that's great, maybe we decide it's not great, but we have some time to, to talk about later. So, are we thinking three hundred, three fifty, what are we, what are we thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, I'm okay with either, but if we're concerned about all day, and you want to move to three fifty, I'm okay with that, too. And get rid of, you know, all day, worrying about all day events.
Should we try for this year? It's like, like Shannon said, it's a one-year.
Yeah.
Thing.
And for clerk, what do you currently get, what month is it, extra fifty, is that what?
Yeah, yeah, clerk's fifty a month, that was supposed to be.
That's what PCLA has, yeah, PCLA.
Fifty monthly.
For the chair.
Yeah. If we're averaging it out, what if we did like the three hundred, I mean, I, I don't know, I just feel like three fifty is kind of high, you know? Okay, no, I mean.
I feel like three hundred is more reasonable.
Okay, so let's sum, yeah, that's fine. So who would like to make a motion?
I don't know.
Well, we need to figure out with, with the. Let's do the. Chairman. Why don't we just do the bottom, same, keep the same as we have. Oh. Monthly chairperson is a hundred dollars, clerk monthly would be fifty, and then, uh, treasurer twice a year gets a payment, extra payment of sixty-two fifty in June and December. Alright.
I'll, I'll change the wording on here to that.
Okay. So I make a motion for. Is that what we're doing? David.
I can move for that three hundred dollars.
Okay.
Uh, month. Um, a hundred dollars for the chair, fifty dollars for clerk, sixty-two fifty for their.
Right, they're huge in a year.
Time to get in the weeds, here we go.
Alright, do we have a, do we have a second? Second by Nicole, any further discussion, team?
Well, both, well, that's done in July, nothing. I'm just looking to set up meals, we'll be set that in July, so.
Okay, yeah, that's set in July, perfect. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Good riddance to these forms.
And the term is there.
Yeah. Okay, so now we have our, uh, twelve point two, set, uh, the twenty-two board meetings, so it's in our packet here. Um, hopefully by May, we're gonna be in our EDF community room, uh, so that is the only big thing on here, same thing as before, we have one meeting in, or, yeah, one meeting in December, every other, every month is two meetings. Does anybody have a problem with anything on the sheet?
So this is my last time voting, and I can't, but not object to the time again, but.
I. Thank you. Alright, do we have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. This is. Everybody here, it's, it's our comedy. Okay.
Much for you now, it's all.
That's right, love it. Okay, twelve point three, uh, lane changes, uh, Brooke sent those out to us, so I, you reviewed them on your computer, do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So policies, this is the second reading of 103 complaints, student, employees, parents, other person's forum. 421 gifts to employees and school board members. 504, student dress and appearance. 510, school activities. 511, student fundraising. 522, title line sex, non-discriminatory policy, grievance procedure in process. 524, internet acceptable news policy. 526, hazing promulgation. 616, school district system accountability, and 806, crisis management policy. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
And I got David. Nicole, you want a second? Any further discussion or questions?
I got a question on.
Yeah.
I'm still just confused on this gift, or the employees and no employees, school board's not supposed to accept, we can accept. We're an employee too, yet you can get some to employees and can't get money, and then we got Christmas gifts now from MBEF, and I mean, does that go over, or how is wrong about put into this stuff? Or we just ignore it because somebody argues?
I, I didn't look at your gift, but I'm assuming it was for four dollars and ninety-something cents, so.
You approve, right?
I approved, I didn't, yeah. I don't approve much of what the union does, no. I'm assuming when they put it together, they had that in mind.
The language is a little bit.
It is.
MSBA is saying the same thing to us online about the conference.
They are. It's about, it's gotta be no more than five dollars, so.
That was my own.
That's statutory, right?
It is, it is. Yeah, so, yeah.
Good discussion, Ronnie. I do, I think it's great.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. I mean, it's like, it's, it's all of it, right? It, it's nothing.
All right, any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Twelve point five, this is a non-certified contract for Ian Lane Board. Per professional, effective January 3, 2022. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Twelve point six, assistant principal position. So this is a position that we had posted last year. We interviewed for, unfortunately, the individual couldn't take it at this time, so we're reposting it, and this will be assistant principal to help in the elementary school once the elementary is over in school, so. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any other questions or discussion?
I'm lying or anything on this?
Yeah, so, so after the board approves this tonight, hopefully, uh, we're gonna post it, and then we're gonna post it till the end of January. Uh, if we don't find we're getting enough candidates, whatever, we'll extend it, but right now I'm hoping the end of January. And then interviewing the week of the seventh of February is kind of what I have, I had, so then we'll give, it's a person that's from outside the district, uh, they have time to figure out moving, whatever. If it's somebody in the district, it gives us time to post that position, so.
Okay, immediately or at the end of the?
No, it'll be for the next school year, so it'll be a July one start date. Yeah, good question.
Who was doing the interview?
Uh, I haven't put that together yet, so we thought we'd let the board approve. No, it's okay, Laura. It's, it's probably gonna be the admin team, that's what we did before, so. Which includes, includes Tracy, it includes John, it includes Mary Ann, so not just principal, there's other people too, so. Worked out really well last summer when we did it, so I'm hoping that they'd be part of that again.
I know Laura enjoyed doing it, but now, since you're working.
Yeah, so, yeah, a lot to talk about that too, because you were a part of our interview process. You know what? That's something we can talk about too, uh, you know, we'll have to see. So it's something maybe we could start at four o'clock.
I mean, if there's a board member, if you're interested in doing it again, I mean, since it is an admin, an admin position, it might be kind of good to get a feel. So, you two hook up.
Yeah, so if you, yeah, for sure. So as we get more information here, obviously, we have another board meeting before it's closed, so on the 24th, I can give you kind of an update if we've had it, received any, and not any. By then, I should have another, a more in-depth. Yeah.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, the big one of the night. Twelve point seven, FY twenty-two, twenty-three master agreement between Innes County School District two, twenty-one, sixty-four, and EMDGs, so. Um, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion or questions for negotiators, Shannon, or we have our EMDGs here. These are folks that worked on the contract, so thank you for giving me. Any questions?
I'd just like to reiterate what David said, too. The process, but all, the communication was good. I thought fairly quickly, and unfortunately, that was new, so we had to wait longer than, I think we all know.
And our goal is just to ratify this.
Yeah, just have them come in, sit down. That's why we voted for chair.
All right, so we got David in motion, Amy a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right, so next meeting, Monday, January 24, um, at six o'clock, with a personnel committee following at the conclusion. So when we're down at MSB, I know Nicole, would you have any changes? Did you think?
I'm not gonna be able to make yours with my new position.
Yeah, uh, committees, I'm sorry. Any, no committee changes, or any, no committee changes? We talked about one, but, so we'll discuss that down in the cities. I don't foresee anything really changing. I don't think we're gonna be adding any committees, so just if you, the committees that were on when Shannon got here, that's pretty much, I think, where we're gonna, we're gonna stay, but we'll have discussion and let you guys know. Um, so whoever's on personnel plan, I'm here. Um, and we're gonna be down at MSB.
Yeah, and we are gonna have a budget committee meeting down there with the budget committee on Friday morning. Uh, we'll have to determine exactly, because we were supposed to have it after this meeting, but with the basketball game going on and everything else, we just thought, the budget committee was gonna be down there, we just have the meeting there. Plus the fact that I'm working with Marcus and Amanda together tomorrow. Hopefully, I'll have more information that I wanna share at that meeting, including construction. We have the whole in place contracts, so before they leave, make sure you.
All right, so afterwards, um, everybody stop up here and draw ballots, and we'll get that done. And then David and myself and Laura need to sign the boxes. Brooke, do you sign? All of them in the box there, so we have to be really good and stand at the line, so. Anyway, all right, it is folks, um, seven o'clock begins during.
One for each of you. What, you take one and pass it down.
Well, they just gave us different, they're all gave us.
They're all different colors, but they're the same.
Well, they're not the same means. Oh, they're in different order.
Yeah, they're in different order. Why would they be different?
I don't know, I just read it moments ago.
You can't look around and choose whatever.
Can't copy somebody else's paper. If you wanted any information on these people, I have it right here. Good question, the incumbents. Incoming Mark, that Mark has, has already, isn't it, they're all incumbents. Oh, Justin Phillips is not. Everybody else is an incumbent. So Paul Ness, John Carter, or Parker, and Mark Havergren are all incumbents.
All right.
And if you wanna get it back to me, you have to vote for no more than three.
No more than three.
So vote for three of those four, and then get it back to me so I can put it in this handy dandy.
Okay, beautiful. All right, we need to answer it, seven oh one.
So I did not talk about this.
Who's the incumbent? Phillips is or not?
They all know that, and tell me. He told you, look there. I was up on a stool in that room. I couldn't get, who's got a stool? Well.